Good evening, everyone. I call this August 22 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. As a reminder to everyone attending, if you could please address and be recognized by the Chair before speaking, that'd be greatly appreciated. The first item on our agenda is approval of the July 25, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of that meeting.
Yes, Chair. I second that.
Any discussion of those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Approval of the minutes passes. We will now have an open forum for an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission for items not on the agenda. If you wish to testify at the open forum public hearing, the call-in number for tonight's meeting is 415-655-0001. Use webinar access code 24570734027, and the password is 1234.
For those who might be listening at home, the correct dial-in number, so the meeting ID is 24637639050. That is the correct meeting ID number. The access code remains the same at 1234. Sorry for any inconvenience.
Were there any emails or voice messages that came in prior?
Chair and Commissioners, there were not.
Okay. Do we have any callers?
No, we did not.
All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Open forum? And I'll close the open forum. Agenda is approval of the agenda. One question I had prior, I noticed that it was published in some current, but I noticed that the agenda, in the detailed agenda, were not published on the city's website. Do we have any concerns about that?
Chair and Commissioners, that is a staff oversight, and we do apologize for any inconvenience, but it does not create any technical concerns, as we do not have a statutory requirement to publish it on the website.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Chair Rudolph, I move that we add to tonight's agenda the election of a vice chair and possibly secretary, like we discussed at the last meeting.
Chair, could I ask a question about that? My understanding was that, from the email we received from city staff, was that the election needs to take place at the next meeting. So was it just a discussion about that process? Or are you actually calling for the election?
Okay, I missed that, I guess.
That you shared with us?
I do not, but the bylaws of the Planning Commission call for the election of a resigned officer, the meeting after the resignation. So we had tentative, not tentative, we had scheduled it for next September Planning Commission agenda. So that's why it's not on tonight's.
And that was in an email to us?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, I missed it. Pardon me?
It was in the body of the email with the commission packet that we received from Nellie earlier last week.
I just, I guess I have a concern, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I have a concern about, you know, the person who takes over vice chair possibly having to chair the meeting next month. So... But if people are comfortable with waiting, that's fine with me.
My understanding, it's the bylaws, so it's not to our comfort. It's following what has been spelled out before us, so I'm comfortable delaying the...
We'll have it.
So, let me answer that. There's a potential I could be out of town next month. And it's been planned for some time. It would go down to first vice chair, and then it would go down to the secretary to be acting chair for that meeting in the event of any of our absences.
Chair and Commissioners, it is my understanding that we would only need a quorum to hold an election.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Like, do we want to discuss if anyone wants to? I mean, when do we discuss? Who would like to be considered for vice chair? Should we do that now, the meeting before, or should we do that at the time of the vote?
That will happen at the time of the vote, if somebody chooses to nominate somebody.
Okay.
In point of clarification, you can self-nominate as well, right?
I believe so.
That I'm interested in that. But just a clarification, someone could self-nominate themselves if they wanted to serve in that position, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right.
I'm sorry to, excuse me, Chair Rudolph, can you tell me, because I missed it, can you tell me, do you know where it is in the bylaws? I'd just like to read it.
Oh, do you have them?
Yeah.
I don't know, I just saw the same email that was sent to the Commissioner, so I don't know the location within the bylaws.
And there is the option to suspend any of our rules by a two-thirds vote of the members present, as far as the bylaws, that's under miscellaneous. And I won't be here, so I'm really just promoting it out of...
So I found the portion, Chair Quam, in Part Two, Organization, Section One, Paragraph Two. "If the chairperson resigns from office before the next regular organizational meeting, the vice chairperson shall automatically become the acting chairperson until a new officer is elected at the next regular meeting. If both chairperson and vice chairperson resign, the secretary shall become acting chairperson. Any instance where an officer of the commission resigns or retires from office, a new officer shall be elected to the vacated position at the next regular meeting of the commission." So my question would be, since Chair Quam gave her resignation last month, would that then be appropriate to add it to the agenda this month, even though next month?
Mr. Chair, it would seem to me that there isn't a vacancy in the office yet, so we wouldn't be able to elect for an office that isn't vacant.
Okay. I was just thinking out loud and a question.
And if I may, Chair, I think I can speak for all of us that we appreciate our co-commissioners' efforts to resolve this.
Do we have any more discussion?
No, I withdraw my motion.
We've voiced potentially discussing liaisons and any open, is that something we should discuss during the meeting, any open liaisons and resolve that?
Yes, I would like to have that added to the agenda. Did we, city, city, did we, staff, did we prepare who's on what, who's liaison for what of the other commissions?
I believe that it was already sent to you by email a few, couple weeks back, actually shortly after the last Planning Commission meeting, where you asked for the same thing. And you can bring it up under discussion, like under, when you do the reports, towards the end of it, you can have that discussion at that time.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, at this time, let's vote on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Approval of the agenda passes. The next item we have on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an ordinance, amendment to regulations for electrical, electric vehicle charging. Staff, do we have a report?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. After an ordinance requiring electric vehicle charging stations was adopted earlier this year, staff noticed a conflict with state statutes which restrict municipalities from having requirements that go above and beyond the state building code. Therefore, we have a pretty minor amendment to the electric vehicle ordinance that electric vehicle chargers do not need to be installed in enclosed parking areas. This amendment aligns the EV charging rules with the state building code. Staff does not have concerns about this change, because there will still be plenty of opportunities for electric vehicle chargers and its associated infrastructure to be installed in enclosed areas. They will simply be done either voluntarily to, because that's what people in the market will be looking for, or it could be negotiated between the developer and the city through conditional use permits, land unit developments, and other approval processes. The proposed amendment also has a wording change that requires at least 50% of all parking spaces to be built with EV charger conduit, instead of the previous wording, which required 100% of the enclosed spaces to have conduit. The rationale behind this wording change is that previously, the requirement was that only indoor spaces have conduit. We figure indoor spaces are probably approximately half of the total number of spaces on a particular property. So since they're not required to have them indoor anymore, we said that the requirement for conduit would just be half of the stalls, and people can choose to put them wherever they want. It could be either indoors or outdoors. So with the removal of the word interior, we're keeping the amount of electric vehicle charging stations approximately the same with the 50% language. With that, we, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
So the conduit, is that essentially just making it possible to, in the future, run and install chargers?
That's correct. It's running the electricity to the spot, which, if you do it upfront, saves tons of money rather than trying to do it after the fact.
Commissioner, sir.
Thanks. So the previous language required 100% of enclosed spaces to have conduit, but there was no such requirement for outdoor spaces? They were treated differently?
That's correct, yes. I think that the requirement was just to have some of the spaces. And it usually does when there, when there is a requirement for both interior and exterior parking, it usually is about a 50% breakdown. So it's still, the number of conduits would be the same. They just have a wider variety of where they can choose to put them.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
It actually creates more flexibility.
Right, right.
I've got a question. So where will we be in our ordinance compared to what other cities are doing right now with their EV requirements?
I haven't, Chair, thank you, I haven't researched what new ordinances may have come online, but I know that when we originally drafted the EV ordinance earlier this year, we compared it to St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and Minneapolis, because we kind of wanted to be in the norm for what's being done in the immediate area here. So our requirements are very similar to St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and Minneapolis.
Any more questions before we open the public hearing? Do we have any emails or voice messages prior about this subject?
Chair, we did not, no.
At this point, I would like to open the public hearing. Do we have any callers?
Because it was written incorrectly, I'd like to repeat it one more time, that the dial-in, dial-in phone number is the same at 415-655-0001, but the meeting ID number is 24637639050, with an access code of 1234. Thanks. I think we should just give it a minute, just to make sure.
Should we give it a couple minutes to?
Yeah, because somebody might have jotted that down quickly and be dialing frantically.
And to repeat that, the number is 415-655-0001, with a webinar access code of 24637639050, and the password is 1234. And we will wait until 7:20 PM Central Standard Time to give people a chance to dial in. All right, at this point, it is 7:20 Central Standard Time, and do we have any callers? No callers. At this point, I would like to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. At this point, the public hearing is now closed. The next pieces are discussion. Do we have anything we would like to ask or discuss on this matter? My question would be, will the building, does the building code not only consider things on the inside, but the outside of a property or, and/or development? And how would that affect, this code affect that, as well as some of the legal challenges for changing this?
Chair and Commissioners, that's a good question. The building code does tend to only address the walls and inside of the walls of the building.
Chair Rudolph, I would just like to make the comment that I appreciate that the city staff is recommending that we modify the ordinance rather than eliminate it altogether or significantly change it. It seems like a very reasonable modification, and I support it.
Commissioner Canelli.
Thanks, Chair. I also support the recommendation from staff. It seems to me to be a good idea to be in alignment with state laws and regulations.
Chair Rudolph, I do support it, just on the, basically in the flexibility it will allow, seems to make a lot of sense, whenever we can do that.
My comment is, it really does. Every time we get a chance to see that maybe we, maybe overstep something, and maybe need to pull back a little bit, or, you know, align with state building code laws or state laws, it's always a good thing to say, you know what, maybe we made an error, and we need to do a modification. So I do support it as well. At this point, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the ordinance and forward it to the City Council.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Chair, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Canelli. Why don't we vote on this motion? At this point, I'd like to vote on an ordinance amendment to regulations for electric vehicle charging. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. The motion passes. The next thing on our agenda is liaison reports. Community Services Commission. Who was this, do you know who was assigned? Do you have those handy?
We do, Chair.
Would anybody object if we go through to who's assigned and then work on delegating those that may not be assigned at this point?
Would you like me to read it out loud?
Please.
So Community Services is currently assigned to James Rudolph. The City Council is currently assigned to Catherine Quam. The HRA is Brett Sturza. And please forgive me if I mispronounce any of your names. The School Board is assigned to Eddie Homvig-Johnson. The Transportation Commission is Benjamin Suma. And the Sustainability Commission is Brendan Keenally.
So we're going to be having the, it looks like...
The Chamber of Commerce is the one that is currently unassigned.
Okay.
I do also have the dates here available, if you need them for discussion purposes.
Who would like, because I think historically, the chair hasn't been on a liaison. So we're going to be having the Community Services and the HRA, if I'm right, and the Chamber of Commerce. Your HRA. So who would like Community Services?
Are there any, do we have enough people to cover all of them, or will there be a shortage?
Will be a shortage.
Is there any, like, precedence for, like, which ones should be filled first? Or is it just kind of whichever ones are?
I don't believe there's a priority.
I would just wait, and that with Commissioner Quam stepping down, I think the City Council liaison is an important role. And I do, I mean, we hear from city staff when City Council discusses planning issues, but it is, I would like to encourage that kind of communication and also have a better... but it is, I would like to encourage that kind of communication and also have a better, I should personally keep track of what's happening at the City Council level better. But I feel like that's an important liaison role, and I would hate to see that go unfilled.
Chair. I currently am serving as liaison to the Sustainability Commission, which is not requiring a whole lot of attention.
Okay.
I would like to volunteer to take on, in a liaison role, the City Council.
All right.
Unless, of course, anybody here wants to arm wrestle for it.
Personally, unless anyone has objections, my choice would be the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce? I think everybody's got an assignment now, so. Do we have a City Council? Sorry, this, the break on the agenda is a little bit off today.
I'm sorry, Chair. Did you mention that you were looking to find someone else?
Yeah.
For the Community Services as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we don't have any assignments at this point, I can continue to do it.
Okay.
Any HRA report?
No, not this time.
Richfield School Board.
I'm embarrassed to admit that I, I have not been following through with that. I didn't realize that I was assigned that. As I think back, I remember that conversation now, but anyway. I apologize. Going forward, I'll be there.
All right. And you can watch it online, too. You know, Transportation Commission.
Yes, Chair Rudolph, there was a Transportation Commission meeting. Topics discussed were study of vehicle travel, of vehicle miles traveled within the city, and crash data, collision data for the last several years. City staff will be doing data collection and monitoring, I believe, over the next several weeks or months. And that data will be used to inform an ongoing discussion of speed limits on various streets throughout the city. I don't know any further details of what may be proposed there or not, but that there is data collection going for an evaluation of speed limits. There is also discussion of several pedestrian safety projects proposed as part of safe routes to schools around some of the schools in the city.
All right. Chamber of Commerce. Anything going on? All right. Sustainability Commission.
No report.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the City Council.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Just to share that, not exactly related to our commission, but that there was a primary, as you know, and Husnia Dent Bradley won the primary for the council member-at-large because that's being vacated by Mary Supple, who's running for mayor. So Husnia was on the Transportation Commission, and she also has a lot of experience beyond city level, I've heard. I wanted to share that.
Who was second place? Because both of them will be on the ballot, is that correct?
Pardon me?
Who was the second-ranked voter? Because both of those will be going then to the election, right?
Mary Supple and Husnia Dent Bradley, you mean?
No, Mary is running for mayor. So then two people follow from, like, from the primary to, it narrows it down to two people. I think it's Sharon Christiansen.
Sharon Christiansen, yeah.
Who might have been the second person who's going forward. Okay. Thank you.
So too much focus on one person, sorry about that.
It was Christiansen, it's, I brought that up here.
All right, the next item we have is the City Planner's Report.
Chair and Commissioners, I have no report other than to say that we do have an item for next month's agenda, so there will be a meeting.
All right. The next item is the next meeting time and location is a regular meeting on September 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers here at City Hall. And then we have adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Thank you.